That night, I was not available that night, but I did watch it later on. Primarily, there was a number of concerns raised by Dave Prescott from Newland Communities and Commission discussion. Since that time, we've had written comments received from Mr. Prescott, Ed Bull, Sun MP, and also some oral conversations and review by Suncor. And I'll get to those in a minute. But maybe as a brief background to refresh your memory, in this text amendment, looking at the existing PAD, Article 3-6, some of the primary things that we're doing to clear up this section, provide better clarity and organization and readability is, one, separating out the use of PAD as an independent district versus an overlay. And we've done both, they're both in this article, but they kind of blur together in terms of how the text is written and how they should be applied. PAD district is you establish a separate district, you basically have a standalone, separate district that you make your own rules for, what the land uses are proposed, what the development standards are, and how they're going to be applied to the property. It's generally a larger scale project, mixed use with commercial, residential, but it doesn't have to be, but it's generally larger projects with mixed use. PAD overlay, which we've used a few times, is where you would take a base zoning district like C2 and provide an overlay solely to provide a variation in the development standards, like building height or setbacks. So what we've done is separated out those two into two separate articles. That's one of the primary things we've done. And then in those articles have defined the process for obtaining the PAD zoning approval or the overlay. The other main thing is, in the proposed draft, is providing clarity regards to the process for establishing the PAD zoning. Currently, the zoning ordinance talks about preliminary zoning and final zoning. And most of the time, you see final PAD zoning, but a few times preliminary. The ordinance isn't really clear about what that process means, so we've clarified it to provide that you go through a one-step zoning process, you come in one time and get PAD zoning. And then with that, you have a two-step development review process, preliminary development plan and then final development plan. Or you can skip just straight to the final development plan, but it's important to separate out that PAD zoning district itself is a one-step process as a zoning entitlement. And then in the rest of the articles, we go through and define what's required in the preliminary development plan, a final development plan, and what the expectations are for a PAD zoning district. They're asking for a special zoning or an overlay with waiver of standards. In exchange for that, these projects should exemplify high quality and meet not only the city's design expectations, but even go beyond that in some manner to provide a high-quality development project that's consistent with our general plan. So we've included in the PAD draft ordinance some of those expectations regards to open space, residential design and development, and things of that nature, to give an indication of what the expectation is for a planned area development. So that kind of describes what the amendments were going to do. Since you last met, again, we met, received comments from a number of them people, we went back and staffed, looked at the ordinance. It was obviously some areas were not clarified as clear as we thought they were, we needed to adjust some language. So what we transmitted to you is that revised ordinance, and in that track changes format, made numerous changes to add, delete items, clarify text language. Then sent that back out to the people that did re-review for us to see if that met their concerns. And then even after that, had a meeting with a couple of them to clarify a couple more items and made some more final changes. So we believe that, I guess, a couple of different things. One, there were some very good comments that we transmitted, and through the revisions, it made the ordinance better. I believe today, after, you know, discussing it with those individuals and companies that made comments, which we really appreciate, that we've got an improved ordinance, and I think it's to their liking and that they support. But some of them are here tonight, and I guess we'll see, but I believe it does. And again, I want to reiterate, I think through the comments that they received in the discussion, they opened up some points that needed clarification and made the ordinance better. So with that, I'll conclude. Again, a recommended action is for you to make a recommendation of approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff at this time? Any questions of staff? Public, since there is no applicant for this public input, anybody from the public like to speak? Okay, the chair is going to ask Mr. Prescott to come up. David, would you identify yourself for the...
Certainly, David Prescott, Newland Communities, 2850 East Camelback Road, Phoenix, Arizona.
Okay. At the last hearing, you were extremely agitated by the wording of the ordinance as it stood, and there have been numerous revisions that I can see. I'm sure you didn't get everything, but are you, it's Newland Communities, you as the representative of Newland Communities, are you acceptable of the ordinance as it's going forward?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, went through and met with staff, they addressed every single one of the issues that I was concerned about, and I'm very happy with the ordinance. I think it is much better, and I told staff that.
Okay.
And I appreciate the Commission listening to me for two hours, because I know you're volunteers, and sorry.
All right, thank you. Okay, I am going to, anybody else from the public like to make a comment on this? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And any comments from the Commission? In that case, I would like to have a motion to approve Case 09220-00004, the zoning text amendment.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner Schlotzer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Under new business, I got a request from the applicant of items E and F, E as in Edgar, F as in Frank, to continue those items until the October 21st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And they would like, they would prefer to have action now so they can depart, and I guess, so if it's the pleasure of...
Okay, wait a second. The CVS D?
No, E and F.
E and F.
E as in Edgar, F as in Frank.
Oh, okay.
E and F.
Okay.
So we're going out of order.
We're charging for part.
Let me read...
Excited about these meetings.
The chair is amending the agenda, and I will open, do I need to open a public hearing? Or can I just have a motion to continue these two items?
Harvey? I think you would have to open the public hearing and then...
Okay. We're going to open the public hearing on Case 09200002, Australia 85 Commerce Park Rezone, and the request by the applicant is to continue this item till October, is that correct?
21st.
October 21st meeting.
PNC.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, can I get a motion? Vice Chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue Case 09-200-00002, the Australia 85 Commerce Park Rezone, until the October 21st Commission meeting.
I have a motion from the Vice Chair, a second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. I'm going to open the public hearing now for Case 09500001, Australia 85 Commerce Park Preliminary Platte, and the applicant, again, has requested that this be continued to the October 21st meeting. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we continue Case 09-500-00001, the Australia 85 Commerce Park Preliminary Platte, until the Commission's October 21st meeting.
I have a motion from the Vice Chair and a second from Commissioner Peters. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Close the public hearing, I think I did that slightly out of order. But for the record, that was Case E and Case F on tonight's agenda, and they have been continued. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Moving back to the original agenda, I am going to open the public hearing on a five-year consolidated update plan for needs assessment, and Katie Wilkin will make the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the Commission. The City of Goodyear is a participant in Maricopa County's Urban County HUD program. And what this is, is a program created by HUD for smaller cities such as Goodyear, and what they do is they give community development block grant and home initiatives funding to the county, and then the county distributes it to smaller cities. So the city has to apply to Maricopa County for any CDBG or home funding they may want. Over the past 19 years that the city's been a part of this program, we've received $3.2 million and used this money for housing rehabilitation, water line replacement in historic Goodyear neighborhood, and the improvements for street lighting and sidewalk improvements in the Western Avenue Commercial Corridor. To be a part of this program, the city must have a consolidated plan, which is updated every five years, and this consolidated plan is expiring in 2010, so we're now updating it. And it'll be the plan for July 2010 to July 2015. The plan includes a needs assessment, which is an assessment of the public housing, any type of housing and community development needs of the city. It includes an analysis of barriers to affordable housing, and it also includes a listing of all the projects that the city wants to use CDBG or home money for. In order to apply for home or CDBG money for a project from the county, the project has to be listed in the consolidated plan. As part of the consolidated plan update, the city is required to hold a public hearing on the needs assessment, which is the purpose of tonight's public hearing. And basically, what the needs assessment includes, and for those of you who've seen our online survey, this will look familiar, for those of you who haven't, you can take an online survey for our needs assessment, it's available on goodyearaz.gov. It includes a listing of all the potential social service and housing needs of the city. And this isn't necessarily limited to those needs that would be fulfilled by CDBG or home funding, but it's just trying to get a grasp of what the needs of our citizens are. And so what we're trying to do tonight is, one, make sure we kind of have a comprehensive look at all the possible needs, so if anyone wants to identify other possible needs we might have in the city, we're looking for that. And then we're also trying to prioritize these needs, so if people have opinions on something that's very high priority or something that's very low priority, we're looking for input on that as well. But of course, we are welcoming any questions or comments on the consolidated plan, on the CDBG or home program, or if anyone has any suggestions for projects they'd like the city to look into, including in our plan, we're happy to take those comments as well. What the staff is going to do is we're going to take the information from the needs assessment and try and come up with projects and identify those and finish the consolidated plan. Then when we have the draft consolidated plan, we'll bring that back to Commission at the September 16th meeting, and then hopefully it'll go on to September 28th Council meeting for approval, so you will have a chance to see the actual draft plan before we take it to the county. And it's due to the county on October 1st. And projects for CDBG or home for next year are, applications are due in December, so whatever project we're going to apply for this December, that project needs to be in this consolidated plan, so we'll know right away what we're applying for next year. So that concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions and, of course, take any input anybody has.
Questions of staff?
I have a question.
You had, Katie, you had a citizens' meeting last night?
Oh, thank you very much, I should have mentioned. We did offer an opportunity for a citizens' meeting, we wanted to offer an opportunity for a more informal meeting as well, and we did only have four people in attendance last night, but I appreciate Chairman Gelsner and the three other people who came. We do, the online survey has been getting a good response, I'm not exactly sure how many people, but I've been getting some emails and calls about the online survey too, so I believe that's provided a good forum for people providing information.
Thank you.
Katie, could you maybe highlight some of the projects that we have gotten money for in the last couple of years for the public record, please?
Thank you. The biggest project we've gotten money for is housing rehabilitation, and most of those housing rehabilitations have taken place in the historic Goodyear neighborhood. We've rehabbed 88 homes using $2 million from the home program. We've also recently done a water line replacement, the water lines in historic Goodyear had been deteriorating, and we received grant money to replace those. We've just received an additional grant, so we're going to be doing a second phase of that project, which should be starting in the next six months. And we also used some money for Western Avenue, you'll see that there's been a, if you drive by Western Avenue lately, there's been a lot of improvements to Western Avenue, and the sidewalk improvements and street lighting improvements specifically were funded by CDBG dollars.
Thank you. Any other questions from staff? I mean, from the Commission? Any comments from the public? Anybody like to make a comment from the public concerning this public hearing? Seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing, and there is no Commission action required for this item. Okay. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing for Case 09200004, Planned Area Development Amendment for Centerscape at Palmdale, and I believe Mr. Kretschia is truly going to present at this time.
This is a PAD amendment for Centerscape at Palm Valley. What we have is 39 acres located here along Bullard-McDowell Road, I-10. This is the parcel subject to tonight's amendment. Part of the development includes a couple of existing uses, this is the location of the PF Changs and the Red Robin right here. Surrounding this parcel to the north, we have Palm Valley Promenade, Lifetime Fitness, this will be the Future Mall site, over here is Future Commercial, the interstate again, and we have also Future Commercial here to the east, and here's the Flood Control District Retention Basins. The zoning of the property is currently PAD, mixed-use commercial. The design guidelines, development standards for that PAD, that was the at-home district that was approved by the Council in March 2006. Many of the Commission probably remember that development had a focus on home furnishings and furniture. Since that time, the applicant has decided to amend the PAD, and tonight's action is to change development standards, the uses and design guidelines for the center. And what they would like to focus on with the amendment is a change to more office and hotel uses, along with the existing and planned retail and restaurant uses. And the whole entire center, including the existing uses, will be referred to the Centerscape at Palm Valley marketing name. Included with the PAD amendment request was a conceptual site plan. This isn't a formal site plan per se, but more of how the applicant envisions the property will develop. What we have down here are the three office buildings adjacent to I-10, along with the hotel here at the corner. We have some inline retail and shops here through the middle of the site, and then some pads here proposed along the north, adjacent to McDowell Road. Here's proposed car wash fueling facility. Office buildings proposed at a height of three and four stories, the PAD allows them to go up to six, the hotel is planned at eight stories. A couple other deviations proposed with this amendment would be reduced setbacks along Bullard, I-10, and 145th Avenue. Access into the site, this drive here along Bullard, these two along McDowell, those are existing, these access points here, conceptual, we will look at that further during site plan review. Any driveway would need to meet city design guidelines and engineering design guidelines. Those will be reviewed when those site plans do come in. And these were the elevations included with the PAD amendment. Again, conceptual, but do indicate how the center would likely develop. This is the retail elevations. And these are the proposed hotel, I mean, excuse me, office building elevations. We do not have elevations for the hotel at this time. With our review, we do find that the PAD amendment is in conformance with the general plan, in conformance with the Palm Valley master plan, and is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report, and just as a matter of clarification, these stipulations as written and designated in the staff report would replace any stipulations that went with the former at-home district. So these are the stipulations that now apply to the property. With that, Mr. Chairman, staff is available for questions.
Okay. Questions of staff? Any? I have a couple. Steve, on step four, is this a City of Goodyear water site, or is that, is this a Lipsco site?
City of Goodyear, for both water and sewer.
Okay. It works for me. I was just questioning, since they were across the street from Lipsco, I thought this was Lipsco property. The other question I have is, since we don't have a conceptual elevation for the hotel, could we have a stipulation written in so that the hotel, when the hotel gets developed or when it goes to site plan, that the Commission could see it? I mean, it is going to be eight stories, and you know how much I like eight-story hotels, which are fine, but I would like to see it before it just shows up. Not that it would be...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I mean, you have that prerogative if you want to add a stipulation to that.
But you see, Gary, not everyone is as enamored with tall buildings as you are, so you run the risk of...
I guess I do, I was just thinking about that.
Leave well enough alone.
Maybe we'll leave well enough alone. And on that note...
Just playing devil's advocate.
That's fine, no, 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 that's okay, that's okay. I know how much you like pylon signs too.
I'd like the tall buildings.
It's time for the applicant to come up and make their presentation briefly. Well, you're winning before, you know, so... We're in the 88th minute, let's not go into injury time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Mitch Rosen with Suncor Development Company, and I will spend just a moment on our project, but as I was sitting, thinking about what I would say, I first want to say how grateful we are to be able to work with your staff. This has taken a long time, I think we've had 47 different iterations of this, but I would tell you that in the trenches, the staff has been a good partner to work on, and I think the result is a project that is, if you support and the Council supports, will be a real asset to the community and will be very nice-looking as well. Short of just understanding why we've made this change, which is to step back and say that we spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to do the at-home district, do a furniture district, and the reality is that kitty-corner to us is going to be a mall, it's, it has a significant impact on what happens with our site, and what we also learned is that the market told us that a furniture project like this, you can't say they're not going to happen, because they do. You can look at Scottsdale Road just south of the 101, and there was a unique moment in time where that project happened, but what we've realized is that project isn't going to work on this site. And so we stepped back and looked at this unique parcel of land and recognized that... And so we stepped back and looked at this unique parcel of land and recognized that the City of Goodyear has very few parcels that front on the I-10, and very few parcels that front on the I-10 that, that you can make into office development like this one. When this project gets developed, as the market comes around, I believe that it will be very well-received as it relates to the office and the complementary retail uses behind it. And that, and I keep saying this, but the City of Goodyear is due, and the part of the City of Goodyear that is due is the employment element, which is what drove us to incorporate office uses into the project. And I and we believe that this project will be very desirable to the employers that look into the West Valley into the future, and I think that'll be a nice complement to all the other uses that are starting to become strong parts of your community. So that's, that's the background as to why we are where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions of the applicant? Questions, questions or comments? Okay, the chair will take it upon himself to say that this is a, the chair believes that this is a great improvement over the previous project and looks forward to seeing the hotel develop and looks forward to seeing the Class A office buildings develop across from one of our great medical centers that has been recently built in the City of Goodyear. Thank you, Mitch. Anybody from the public like to make a comment on this project? Mr. Matlin, please come up and fill out a card afterwards and turn it in to the, to the clerk of the commission after you've finished making your, your comment, please, and identify yourself. Thank you.
Roger Matlin, City of Goodyear. Okay, a couple of questions. It sounds like this project has not been completely thought out. It sounds like there, I keep hearing words like "believe" and "we're estimating." I personally would like to see a project that has been completely thought out, including, do they have a, an occupant for the hotel? Should I just pose that question to you, or should I ask?
You can pose that question. The commission is not going to be answering those questions for you, but the applicant may want to come back up and, and make a comment.
Okay. I'll lay out these questions then. Is there an occupant for the hotel? Are there occupants for the office space? And what grade of hotel is it going to be? Goodyear has a long history. You have nice vacant buildings all around, especially in that area. I would not like to see an eight-story vacant hotel, which is very difficult to occupy after it's been vacated, and I don't know that that would be beneficial. I'd like to see them have a, have a hospitality tenant or, or buyer for the hotel ready to go before you give them approval for such a project. In addition, have traffic studies been concluded for this? And how that will impact the traffic in that immediate area, including any residential that is in the area south of the freeway? And then finally, what is going to be the true benefit to the City of Goodyear and to the taxpayers here? Are we actually going to get any revenues? Having been at last, last night, I was at a bridge tournament, I know, very exciting, at the Sheridan Crescent over in Phoenix. And while over there, I noticed, you know, they had very good occupancy there, a number of nice elements to their hotel, but they're also located in the center of Phoenix, surrounded by millions of people. Out here in Goodyear, we have 46,000 people in the city. We have no businesses. We have no real jobs out here. What's going to attract someone to come out and stay at a hotel in the City of Goodyear that's immediately off the freeway at Bullard and McDowell? And I don't think this is the appropriate time to be giving them the approval for this project.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matlin, just so you know, the commission does not make economic or market decisions. The commission recommends decisions on zoning and land use. That is the primary job of the commission. The previous, this, this land had been previously zoned for retail with a housing, with a furniture orientation to the entire project, and the developer has come to us to amend the project and to change the scope of the project from the majority retail to a combined office-hotel retail project. So if the commission chooses to affirm the decision, what the commission is, the commission is not making an economic decision on the viability of the project. The commission is making a land use decision on is this a beneficial land use for the City of Goodyear, looking at the surrounding areas and other, other areas. And on that note, I will invite the applicant back to either address any questions you might have or go forward.
If I may, I, I understand that. I just don't know that, I was an underwriter in the commercial real estate industry for 20 years, so I was the head underwriter for a major international bank, previous to my consulting position that I do now. And so I don't see a hotel at this site. I don't think it's an appropriate land use for this site, at this time at least, and I don't want to give them open rein on it without an appropriate use, because I don't want to see another vacant building.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mr. Rosen, would you like to respond, or would your cohort in crime there? Please identify yourself to the commission.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jim Tomlin, SunCorps Development Company. I would, I would like to respond to the comment. Let me put this, the site plan back on. As pointed out previously, the hotel is located right here at the off-ramp, at what we believe to be the most strategic portion of the project, to provide the best freeway visibility and really a gateway into, into the whole commercial area. We are under contract with a hotel developer, Drury Hotels from St. Louis, is, is planning this eight-story hotel. It will be unlike anything else that exists in the West Valley. It will be a, a corporate-level, first-class facility. We don't have a timetable right now of when they would actually build the project. One of the attractions was both the quality of the intersection and the, the growth that's anticipated in the area, both from the cancer centers as well as the Future Mall, and, but particularly the potential for a significant employment center here at this intersection. And so the combination of the, the new mix of land uses, the, the location attracted them here. Over the last year and a half, they have been acquiring sites, a number of, five or six sites throughout the metropolitan Phoenix area, and kind of focusing on what they believe to be the most strategic intersections, and they've selected this. They came to us. We didn't actually, you know, market this property to them. They came to us independently, this is where they want it to be. So the project, it could be two years through five years, depending upon the, the demand in the marketplace. So they're certainly not going to develop a hotel, nor would we develop any office buildings till we feel there's going to be the demand for those uses.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any comments or questions from the commission? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any comments from the commission or questions, or can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 09-200-0004, the Planned Area Development Amendment for the Centerscape at Palm Valley Commercial Center.
I have a motion from the vice chair, and I have a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. Okay. For the record, the typed agenda for the next case has a, has an extra zero in it, so I'm going to open the public hearing for case 09700-00002, Waste Management Minor Amendment to the General Plan. And the public hearing is open, and Katie Wilkin is our staff presenter. Katie, let her rip.
Thank you, Chairman Gilzer, members of the commission. Those of you who were around at the time will remember that in 2007, we added a large amount of land to our general plan area in the southern area known as Sonoran Valley. When this general plan amendment went through the process, there was, as you all probably know, a plan for a master plan community known as Amaranth, proposed by Montage Development. At that time, Montage Development, well, had been working with Waste Management, who owns the Butterfield landfill, which is located in the Sonoran Valley area. And currently, the trucks that enter the Butterfield landfill come off State Route 38 up 99th Avenue, which creates a large amount of truck traffic along 99th Avenue. As Montage Development was creating their plans for their master plan community, they saw a need to relocate this entrance to the Butterfield landfill, landfill farther to the west, to divert the traffic further away from where the residential land uses were going to be placed by Montage Development. And Montage and Waste Management had been working together on this deal, but it had not been finalized when the general plan amendment went through. So for this piece of property, which is located just north of State Route 38 between 91st and 95th Avenue, which is owned by Waste Management, it was proposed to have medium-high-density residential, which is what was adopted and which is currently on our land use plan. However, Resolution 07-113, which was the adopting resolution for the Sonoran Valley major general plan amendment, included a section that said that if that relocation of the entrance to the landfill did not take place within 18 months, that the city would initiate a general plan amendment to change that land use to light industrial, which Waste Management felt would be more appropriate with that truck traffic in the area. It has been two and a half years since the resolution was approved, and Waste Management has asked the city to process this amendment since Montage Development is no longer. And so the proposed land use would be light industrial for the subject property. And this is in accordance with the approved Resolution 07113. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions of the presenter? Seeing, question, seeing, seeing, I have one. Would this land be, if, if the general plan designation changes, would this property be subject to an expansion of the landfill into this area? Karen, are you the representative? Can you come up?
I don't know. Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Karen Keith of Tiffany and Bosco at 2525 East Camelback in Phoenix, here on behalf of Waste Management. At this time, we don't have any immediate plans for this acreage. It's simply property that was part of or next to the Amaranth master plan that Waste Management owns. We're not in the residential development business, Waste Management is not, and so we're simply asking for the land to be reverted back to the original land use designation that, that was previously applied to the property. At this time, we do not have any expansion plans into this property. We just simply want the reversion of the land use in accordance with that resolution that Katie had mentioned.
Okay. But could, could Waste Management expand the Butterfield landfill into this property in the future with, based on this landfill designation, or, or?
I suppose it's possible, but right now, the current landfill is catty-corner from this particular property, so if anything, there might be ancillary uses.
Okay, the, the landfill is that dark blue up in the, to the northwest, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and there is an old cell next to this property, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, keep in mind that this is a general plan amendment to, to do as you suggest, that if they wanted to develop this landfill, first they need proper zoning to do so.
Okay.
Which, which they would be back before you to do it.
Whoever takes over for Amaranth will be back to flip it three or five years from now anyway, but I'll be gone by that time. But I'll be sitting in the audience.
And I don't, I don't know if this was mentioned, but this property that we're talking about here was the subject of an exchange with Amaranth, or with Montage, that was currently west of the existing landfill property, so that exchange didn't happen.
Right.
Here we are today.
All right, thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Does anybody from the public like to make a comment on this case? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 097000002.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Peters and a second from Commissioner Schlotzer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. Karen, just so you know, your earlier thing got postponed or continued. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for case 09300-00001, a CVS drive-through pharmacy use permit. And our presenter is Mr. Carecia, who is pinch-hitting for Mr. Burningham, who's not here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. I am filling in for Brett, so go easy on me, I guess, with the questions. But this is a use permit for a convenience use, and that convenience use is the drive-through component of the CVS pharmacy. The property is 1.8 acres, which is part of a larger Pebble Creek Crossing center. To the south, we have Pebble Creek Development. To the east, Palm Valley, single-family residential. To the north, we have some condos. And to the west, across Pebble Creek Parkway, is a multifamily development. This is the wider site plan for the whole center, just to give a picture of where this pad is located. And the access points will be, one here on Indian School, which will be restricted right in, right out, with the median located here. Another restricted access point here, again with the median, and then this long driveway, which will allow full turning movements here at this driveway location. And this here is the conceptual site plan for the pharmacy. Drive-through component is located right here, parking up front, building location And these are the conceptual building elevations provided with the use permit application. These site plan improvements shown on this conceptual site plan, these building elevations, again, all conceptual, but do show how the applicant would like to develop the parcel. All development of this site will have to go through the site plan process, where staff will review building elevation, site plan, for conformance with the design guidelines for the center and the city's design guidelines and development standards. Staff does find that the use permit will not be materially detrimental to any persons or neighbors- or neighborhoods in the area. It is compatible with the uses in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this use permit, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Staff is available for questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, questions of staff? Questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one question. I noticed in the public comments, it said that there are a few other pharmacies that are nearby. Where are those on the map?
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, I think those pharmacies that were referenced in the citizen review meeting, they were talking about further south at McDowell Road, you have a new pharmacy going in right there at the northwest corner in Cobblestone Creek. That was one of them that they mentioned. Also, the one further east on Indian School at Litchfield Road, I think it's a Walgreens located right there. I think they were just looking at the concentration of, of the pharmacies within the area.
Other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to make any comments? Please identify yourself for the record.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, good evening. Jason Morris, Withy Morris, on behalf of the applicant, Armstrong and CVS. Pleasure to be here this evening. Staff's done an excellent job giving you an overview. Obviously, we're here for the use permit portion of the entitlement, and that's really focusing on the drive-through element rather than the building itself, but I'm happy to answer any questions about either the use or utility of the building in terms of how that design is going to fit into the rest of the shopping center that's proposed for this area. It's also worth noting that, that the neighborhood meeting was, you know, relatively well-attended. I think we had a handful of people there, and I believe we were able to answer any of the questions that they had. There has not been a tremendous amount of development, commercial development at this intersection. This is essentially the first commercial development at the intersection, so there was some interest in both the timing and also the scale of the development overall. But I think we were able to answer those questions.
Would you care to enlighten the commission on the timing?
Mr. Chair, commission members, the time, the construction timing of this particular component would likely be at the third, fourth quarter of next year. It would be open for business, and then the remainder of the center would follow.
Other questions of the applicant? Okay, anybody from the public like to make a comment?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for commission action on case 09-300-0001, the CVS drive-through pharmacy use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 09-300-0001, the use permit for the CVS pharmacy drive-through.
I second.
I have a motion from the vice chair, a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it, 5-0. Okay, for the record, we previously dealt with case, agenda items E and F, and we are now moving to agenda item G. And I'm going to open the public hearing for case 09-200-00010, City of Goodyear Park and Ride Public Hearing. Ms. Craver is going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Gelsner. Good evening, commissioners. This is a city-initiated rezoning request that will ultimately allow for site plan approval and development of the city's new park and ride facility, a permanent facility. The site is 12.39 acres on the south side of Cornerstone Boulevard, west of Dyce Art Road, and it's located right behind Lowe's, between that and the I-10 on-ramp. The property was recently purchased from the Flood Control District of Maricopa County and is part of, currently part of the district's larger regional detention system. There are additional basins further to the west. The district has determined that development of this is a park and ride, filling in of the site, and development of the park and ride will not impact their system. The project, just to give you a look at the site plan, will be developed in two phases. This being the, the phase line in here. The front area will consist of 421 spaces, the first phase, 80% of those spaces will be covered, and there will be a security and restroom building and a maintenance building built as.
Where?
Where?
Yeah, where, I couldn't find him on the, on the diagram, Karen.
Of the buildings?
Yeah.
One is, the, the little security building is back here, or the maintenance building is back here, and the security building and restroom sit right in here.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep, sorry. Also, there will be motorcycle and bicycle parking on the site as well. Then the second phase in this area will add an additional 428 spaces to the facility. Staff has determined that the site is reasonable and appropriate for the public facilities district and the development of this use, and that it can be developed in a manner that's compatible with the surrounding land uses, and we are requesting that you recommend approval.
Questions of staff and the applicant, because there are one and the same? Okay, seeing none, I have one.
Sure.
Karen, will, will, will this project be backfilled all at one time, and then the phase two will, will be pavement only, or will we be backfilling? In other words, will they do all the grading and dirt at once?
No, I don't believe they're going to do all the, all the filling at once. They're gonna come in this area and do the filling for phase one, and finding the fill is, has been kind of a difficult situation for them, just because it requires so much fill. So I don't believe that the second phase is going to be filled entirely as part of the first phase of development.
Okay, I mean, I know we don't have any rain right now, but are there, would there be erosion problems if they don't have enough fill, or will they be able to stabilize the?
I think there'll be some stabilization methods in the meantime.
Any other questions of staff or the applicant? Close the public hearing on this agenda item and ask for a motion on the City of Goodyear Park and Ride, please.
Commissioner Gelsner, I make a motion that we approve case 09-200-000110, the City of Goodyear Park and Ride.
I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner Schlotzer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, 5-0. All right, staff communications. Since Harvey's.
Mr. Chairman, until Harvey comes back from wherever he's at, there's two items, I guess, listed. His first is a discussion relative to the regular meeting time for the, for future planning commission meetings, and I have no idea what that is, but I'll leave it to Harvey to go from there.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, is there any interest among the commission members to modify the time, the regular meeting time? We've been meeting historically as seven o'clock for many, many, many years, and the council meets at six. Is there any desire? I don't, I know a few of you work, that, have regular jobs, can, is six o'clock of any interest?
One o'clock would be better.
I didn't hear what you.
One o'clock would be better for me.
One o'clock in the afternoon? That would work too.
We could all meet, meet for lunch before. The city has no budget. I'm, I'm happy with the way it is. I got to go to dinner.
It would be difficult to, you know, since, you know, until I-10 becomes fully improved all the way out here, yeah, it would be difficult to get out of here by six.
Okay.
Other, other comments?
But, you know, I don't know, Frank.
Sherry works.
I'm sorry?
Sherry works as well.
Sherry works too. I don't know where she works.
I think we want to leave it.
She works at Westgate.
Okay, want to leave it at seven for now?
Leave it, let's, leave it till the next count, next commission meeting.
You know, if anyone, we could do 6:30, but.
Okay.
This is fine.
We'll leave it at six, uh, seven, I'm sorry. The other couple of items, we set up a tour for the new Reds complex for tomorrow at two, leaving Benita, if anyone's interested, and then Mr. Gelsner, one, as requested, we're going to meet at next door at, in our office, community, community development office. Also, one other.
Is there?
Anyone else want to go?
Some of these tours I would like to go on, but, you know, with work schedules, it's hard to do that during the week. I don't know if, I don't know if going on the weekend makes sense or not, or in the evening time, you know, just, just a thought that I don't, I'm not blowing them off, it's just, you know, it's difficult to get to during the week.
I understand.
Especially in the middle of the afternoon, if it's later in the afternoon or earlier in the morning, it'll be a little easier.
We also have a citizen review meeting scheduled in Mogul, 6:00 PM, Tuesday, August 25th. We're leaving around three. It's a meeting for citizen review of the general plan update for the circulation element to the general plan. We've, we've initiated, staff has initiated a major general plan amendment. Last week, we had three public hearings here at, in this part of Goodyear, and now we're moving it down to Mogul for, for another public hearing. So if anyone'd like to go to that meeting, we're leaving at three. It's a long drive, I realize that, sorry.
It's okay, I've been there.
Okay, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Other, other, anything else from? Okay. Anybody else?